I'll end the order, the business meeting for August fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Start with the pledge allegiance. Pledge of leaders.
To the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Consider Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do. And tonight we have with us John Callahan, Danielle Jewen, Martha Majeski, and myself, Mark Donovan, and our assistant manager, Valentina, Bill Brennan's over here, and Paul Bettinger, our township engineer. We have Lori Getz on Zoom. We had executive sessions to announce for July seventeenth, August first, and August fourteenth to discuss personnel, land acquisition, and
Potential litigation.
Potential litigation. I always forget the third one. Thank you. And since we're right at the beginning here, I'd like to make an emotion to amend the agenda to add authorization to advertise the August twenty second, twenty twenty four workshop meeting and September twenty six, twenty twenty four workshop meeting as regular voting meetings, where the board may consider any business that comes before it, and we'll put that under additional business. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Consider a vote that.
Yeah, I said, we said voting meeting. Yeah, said voting meetings. We're good. And we've got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, we are going to move right to the regular business meeting consent agenda. Acceptance of the minutes of the board supervisors, July tenth, twenty twenty four business meeting and July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four workshop meeting. All departmental committee commission and council reports is posted and received by the board of supervisors for the month ending July thirty first, twenty twenty four. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Treasurers' report and payment of bills. I'll make a motion to consider acceptance of the treasurer's report for the period ending July thirty first, twenty twenty four, and amended treasurer's report for June thirtieth, twenty four. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Lori?
Yes, so the amended treasurer's report for June thirtieth, there was a small typographical error on the pension fund that was corrected, so that's the reason it's being voted on. Again, it was just a typo. It wasn't an actual financial error. The, for a month ending July thirty first, twenty twenty four, we have a general fund balance of just about six point five million, down slightly about twenty eight thousand over last month, which is normal for this time of year. As of the end of the month, we are at forty eight percent of our projected expenditures and eighty three percent of revenues. So we are right on, right on track.
Alright, thank you. Any comments, questions? Motion's made. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion. We approve dispersment dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion on this one?
All of the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, no subdivision land development. We'll move right on to old business, convenience store with gas ordinance. I'll make a motion to authorize advertisement of public hearing for September eleventh, twenty twenty four at seven PM for consideration of amendment to the convenience store with gas ordinance. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Alright. Discussion?
I don't have a whole lot to cover on this. This is what we've been, we've discussed this potential ordinance change the last several, several board meetings. This is just step one of two, authorizing advertisement of the ordinance. The change that's being made to the ordinance is simply the, making the convenience store with gas ordinance consistent with the gas station ordinance. So that means two, gas pumps would not be permitted within two hundred feet of a residential dwelling. I'm sorry, residential district.
District.
I had one thing, Lori. We did receive there to the Chester County Planning Commission comments, and they suggested that instead of saying residential district, that we specifically identify the three districts, which would be the FR, the R one, and the R two. Now, generally speaking, that, that's fine. It clarifies what could possibly be ambiguous language. The problem is then, though, that the new ordinance would not match the old ordinance in terms of saying the exact same thing. So it's really up to the board to decide whether to move ahead as is or to move ahead with it to advertise a format which would include, instead of residential district, a specific identification of the three residential districts in the township.
Do we, do we define it in, in the zoning? Don't we define residential district in the zoning? Or do we not?
Does it matter?
My concern would be if, if there's different types of residential districts created in the future, then we would have to update.
Amended every time.
Yeah, amended every time. I think it's, I see what Mark is saying, is if the definition of residential district is defined elsewhere in the ordinance, this seems unnecessary.
Do we have an apartment district? I think we must allow apartments.
Yes, we do.
Now, apartment is residential, isn't it?
Yeah.
I just, I think, I think residential is, residential district is vague enough, and I shouldn't say vague enough. I think it's inclusive enough.
It's, yeah.
It includes enough. I think it includes everything.
Alright, I'm just responding to what the Chester County people were.
How weird that they would want us to very specifically label each one.
We've run into issues where lawyers are arguing about the word residential in court, so I'm not really surprised to hear Chester County advising it, but.
Make it a capital R and it's a defined term.
They're also, yeah, they're also not winning with the argument that they're making, so. So there's.
Well, one other option is that we might leave it at residential now, but come back and evaluate whether we need to change both of the ordinances at the same time to include apartments or anything else that might be residential with some clarity, so.
Yeah, that, that was going to be my exact suggestion, Bill.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's just leave it as residential for now, and we'll talk about it later for the rest, for the recommendation. Any further?
Yeah, no, the, the, the only item was that the, the, sorry, the Chester County Planning Commission, their concern was that in the APO and in the neighborhood commercial district, it can be, residential properties can be brought on as a special exception. So that's what really brought their concern about it, as opposed to just going with the three residential.
But it's still a residential.
Yeah, but it's a special exception, so it's, it's, I guess it's a little, are you, are you not allowing it to be residential if you put it there in the future? I think, I think that what their concern is, is that, I mean, when I was looking at the zoning map, about seventy percent of the township area is either FR, R one, or R two. That leaves a balance of about thirty percent for all the various other zoning districts. So I think that would be maybe the concern that the, that the planning commission was offering. But that's, I, that's just illustrated in their letter. It's.
Cool.
Could we just do residential dwelling and residential district, cover both sides of it?
Well, the purpose of this was to.
Your microphone. Ow.
Could we do residential dwelling and residential district? Then we cover both sides of that.
Well, the problem is, the purpose of this was to match, make sure that the, the gas station language matched the convenience store language, and the only way to do that is to use the word residential district. It's the only way to make them match, and.
But we can, we can, in one of the versions you drafted, Bill, and I, I don't see why we can't just list it as residential dwelling and residential district. It's a little bit redundant, but.
Well, I'm not sure what we're advertising here.
I would, I would be afraid that if someone were to come in and they would say, well, this is a bit too ambiguous. Which one does it mean? Because if, if they have, if they fit the two hundred with the dwelling, but they don't fit the two hundred with the district, they're going to come to us and say, which one do you mean?
It's the lesser of the two, or some, or.
So I think, I think leaving it the way we chose to word it so that it fit with the gas station, I think, is good enough. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and just, just looking over here to, at the Chester County letter, it's specifically talking about, like, like Paul said, it's by special exception, and those are mixed, mixed-use type districts, not just solely residential districts, so they don't actually qualify as residential districts under zoning. So if, even if we say residential district, it's not pointing to the neighborhood commercial district because it allows commercial and residential. Therefore, it's a mixed-use, not residential district, non-residential district.
I get it.
It's just, it's, it, it, basically I'm saying residential is fine as it is, and we don't need to change it for our township's purposes at this time.
I agree with that.
So, so for that, just hypothetically, I'm sorry, walk me through this. So residential doesn't include mixed use. So if, for example, there was, we had a mixed-use district, and we could have a gas station directly adjacent to it, because it's not considered to be residential.
Potentially.
Potentially, okay.
Yeah, like in a commercial district that has a residential building already in it. For example, like if, say if the total rental, for example, was a resident, an apartment or something, or a single-family dwelling, but then the zoning is commercial, it wouldn't apply there because now they're in a commercial, they're, they're.
Okay, and then there would be no, if we kept the ordinance as is, then there would be no setback requirement at all that we could point to?
If we keep, so if we keep the proposed ordinance as is, you're correct. If we didn't touch the ordinance, it would still apply to those buildings, because right now it says from a dwelling. So that, that covers those situations where there's something in a commercial district or in a neighborhood commercial district. If we do change it, it takes away that setback we already have in place. So we're kind of, we are actually eliminating a protection against gas stations from dwellings within those districts.
Where do we have an APO?
The, the one that I can think of off the top of my head is where Valley, Valley Green, or townhouses are.
And that's the only one in the township?
I believe that is. I don't, I don't know at the top of my head. I don't have a zoning map, but I do know that that is.
I think you're right. I don't think we have any others in the township.
I don't, I don't think so, but that's the one I can distinctly recall.
So their concern is if we were to have an additional APO, that we would need to include it in the ordinance.
Well, I mean, the language that I could think of would be, the setback would be the, the greater of two hundred feet from.
From a dwelling or a district, yeah.
You'd have to word it somehow. Two hundred feet from a residential district or residence, whichever is greater.
Yeah, but, but the point that I'm getting at is that right now.
That situation isn't a concern.
We don't have an A, we don't have another APO. It doesn't, it's not even going to apply. The only way it would apply is if we were to change an R one or an FR in sometime in the future to an APO, and then I think at that time, we would need to consider changing the language. But it doesn't concern us anywhere in the township, because we don't have another APO.
Yeah, we've moved on from that discussion. We're, Danielle and I, we're talking over here on a different, different thing. Because, so, so we're talking, we're, we're not even talking FR, R one, R two anymore. We're talking, we have, we're, we're going to propose an ordinance right here that says two hundred foot setback from a residential district. I don't know where, where, if it applies in our township right now. I don't know where we have existing non-conforming dwellings in our township. Do we, do you guys know offhand? I, I don't know offhand. But say if there's a single-family dwelling in a commercial district, and it's existing non-conforming, a gas station can be built right next to that dwelling, or a convenience store with gas pumps can be built right next to that dwelling if we change the ordinance from what it currently states today, because the current ordinance says two hundred feet from a residential dwelling. If we change that to two hundred feet from a residential district, and we have any non-conforming dwellings in commercial districts or something like that, we're taking away that protection in the commercial district for that residential dwelling that's in existing non-conformity. So that's a separate issue entirely. It sounds like we may be jumping the gun and passing it if we don't know if we're affecting other residences in those districts with non-conformities. I, I mean, we have, we didn't ask you guys to look into it yet. It didn't cross our minds. I, I think it might be good to table this till next month to allow.
Or since next month, or till the, the business meeting that we're now having.
Or to the business meetings. If you guys, if, if you could investigate that before August twenty second, we could talk about it then with a potential amendment to that language with.
Right, and, and would it be possible in this consideration to?
Your mic.
To open the door to grabbing the garage ordinance and making that consistent with whatever we think is best for the convenience store, so that they match.
You mean the gas station ordinance?
The gas station.
Yeah, I, I get you. And just do it all in one fell swoop.
The purpose of this was to make both.
Right. It might be good to make them both match.
Consistent.
Consistent, yeah.
You know, that's what we're trying to.
Exactly, that's, that's exactly what we're trying to do.
But we don't, we also don't want to remove protections from people who are experiencing protections at the moment, and I think that we want to first investigate whether we're doing that, because it seems like that was one of the things we may have missed in our review of this. So if we give our staff some time, and staffing consultants will have time to look into it. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other action on this motion? Motion dies. Okay. And that means we're not going to, I, I, I would assume we're not going to consider the part B of that?
Nope.
Great. No motions on that. Okay, then on to item two in old business. I'm going to make a motion to authorize the township manager to sign the alloy five AIA contracts. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
So I, I provided, I'm going to be providing to Bill some comments, pretty, pretty minor comments, I'd, I'd say, but some, a couple comments. There was one in particular where it looked as though if we were to terminate the contract for convenience, then in addition to paying the architect for the work that they have done up to the point of termination, we might also be obligated to pay them some unidentified amount, and so we just, that, I mean, it's, it, it's not that much. I mean, I have raised questions in prior meetings about levels of insurance. I'm not, you know, a insurance broker, and so I'm going to defer to, to our township staff on ensuring that we have the appropriate levels of insurance. There was another question. Again, this is not a, a legal question, but this is a question about whether we feel that ten visits from the architect to the site during the time of construction is sufficient, or we want them to come more frequently than that. Something for, maybe for Lori and for Valentina to consider. And then, but, but, but I just had a couple comments that I think, since we are having a voting meeting on at the end of August on the twenty second, I, I would request that we table this to that meeting.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, Lori. We're.
Oh, it's okay.
I apologize for mucking everything up.
We're, we're just eviscerating the old business.
Yeah, we're, we're not getting anything done, so.
Motion dies. Yeah, just tear it right up. Alright, so new business. I'm, let's see. I'll make a motion. We consider approval of the police collective bargaining agreement for the period of January first, twenty twenty four, through December thirty first, twenty twenty seven. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Alright. Lori, do you have any discussion on this? It's got your initials right next to it.
Unless there are any questions, no, I don't have any specific discussion on this.
Okay, great. I, I hope this one doesn't die on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Touche, Mark.
She won't come back.
Touche, Mark.
Yeah, I killed one, Danielle killed one. We're betting six sixty-seven. Let's see. I'll make a motion. We consider approval of a proposal from McGrath Consulting dated August seventh, twenty twenty four, for a human resources audit and development of a performance excellence program in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars. This work will involve a full review and update of the township's twenty eleven employee handbook, review and update of all non-uniform job descriptions, non-uniform policies and procedures, and performance evaluation program for all non-uniform township staff. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Alright, Lori, would you like to discuss it?
Yes, so thank you for reading that summary. So now that we've completed the CBA, as we just, the board just approved at the last item, the next step here is to take a, do a full evaluation and review of the township's non-uniform employee policies and procedures. As you can see, we haven't updated our employee handbook since two thousand and eleven, so now, we feel that now is a good time. Roseanne has a great reputation. She's done this type of work for a lot of our neighboring municipalities, and I feel confident that she can help us get this accomplished by the end of the year. So we're intending, assuming that this proposal's approved tonight, to start on this work after Labor Day in hopes of having this new handbook in place to be able to vote, be voted on and go into effect for January twenty twenty five.
And Lori, this is a budgeted item, if I recall correctly?
It was not specifically budgeted for, per se, like, we didn't have a quote from Roseanne at the time that we prepared the budget, but this was something in discussion that was planned as a future project, budget permitting. So, yes, no, and yes.
Okay, alright. And I'll, just so you guys know, this is something that we've been trying to do since twenty fourteen. So this is needed desperately.
No time like the.
Yes. Exactly.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of a letter engagement for PFM Financial Advisors LLC to act as a financial advisor to Skookel Township effective August sixth, twenty twenty four. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to consider approval of a quote for Eltron Corporation in an amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars for police department electronic, electronic ticketing system. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Would somebody like to?
Brian?
Come up to the microphone and introduce yourself, your name, your.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Brian McCarthy with the police department. So the, I submitted a memo. I don't know if you got a chance to read it or not, but essentially, the style that we're currently using of handwriting citations is going out the window. We're the last department in the area to handwrite citations, so much so that the state recently canceled the contract that they had with the printer. So they basically said, go out, find your own printer. We did. We got a couple hundred citations printed up for the time being. Our goal is to use this equipment to implement into the vehicles. Essentially, it's, it looks like a receipt printer. It comes with a handheld scanner, similar to what you would see in a grocery store checkout line. You take the driver's license from the person, scan the back. It auto-populates their information into the citation along with information that we can auto-populate into the citation. We just print the citation out in the car. It comes out on an eight and a half by eleven sheet of receipt paper. We give a copy to the driver. The other copy, which we now drive down to district court on a daily basis, would get electronically filed with the district court in Phoenixville. There's no transfer back and forth between us. Everything gets automatically docketed. On top of that, there's a module that we can use with our records management system that all the information that we put into the citation, or a warning, or a motor vehicle accident, can automatically be then imported directly into our record management system. So instead of handing somebody a piece of paper that says you were involved in an accident, and then going down and sitting at CODI, our records management system, and typing all their information in, and then going to the Penn dot crash, the CRS online crash reporting system and typing it in again, it's all, it all kind of lines up and just dumps information into each other electronically. So it's a cost, it's a, it's expensive upfront, because you're buying seven printers for the cars, seven microphone scanners, the modules, the paperwork, and the DC connections for the electronics. But after everything's installed, right now our citations are about three dollars and fourteen cents per ticket. These new citations are about six cents a ticket, and it takes half the time to fill them all out. So that's why we're asking for this equipment.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions? No.
And this is a budgeted item.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you for touching on that. We have a motion in a second. Do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to resolutions and ordinances. Make a motion to authorize resolution number twenty twenty four dash fifteen, establishing procedures and rules for compliance with the Pennsylvania right to know law. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
It's got you right next to it, Lori, if you wanted to comment on that.
Yep. This is a very minor change that we're making. Recently, a new company has kind of come out of the, the woodwork that has been providing a service to people where they're filing bulk right-to-know requests, but they're, they come through anonymously. So the Office of Open Records recently came out with an opinion saying that, there was actually a court case, stating that municipalities who have in their right-to-know procedures explicitly prohibiting anonymous requests would be able to deny a right-to-know request from an anonymous requester. Our policy did not include that explicit language in the past, so we're just looking to make that change to allow us to save some administrative time and deny anonymous requests that are coming through in that, in that fashion.
Great, thanks. Any further discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two-minute reports. Board liaisons, John.
Yes, so I was at the planning commission two weeks ago. Pretty mild, wasn't too much going on. The biggest thing they were talking about was tackling invasive species issues via policy. Talked about going about it different ways, SALDO zoning, standalone ordinances. It was interesting discussion. Ed has more information on that, if we are at all interested in pursuing that at all. I know the EAC is very interested in invasive. That's their, one of their hobby horses. I talked to Andy about that, and he was going to talk to the EAC about that as well, so. I'm sure they will be discussing that among themselves and have them bring something forward, have them bring something concrete forward for us if that's something we want to pursue. But, interesting idea. That was it, though.
Danielle?
Did you put this thing on the air?
That's what he just reported on.
Oh, that's, no, that was pure PC.
Yeah, Martha went to.
I'm sorry, I thought he said EAC. I apologize.
He said, he said a couple of them, yeah. Don't forget your mic there. Danielle?
I have nothing to report.
Great, thank you. Martha?
Historical commission meeting. Lori, the only thing I have to report on that is that the, there is a representative from the Chester County Planning Commission who is in charge of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our country celebrations, and he would like to come to one of our workshop meetings. I think I forwarded you that. If I didn't, I apologize.
You did.
Okay. That's the only thing I really have for the historical commission. Planning commission, I did go to that. Kurt, I apologize. This is really embarrassing.
We discussed any recommendations on the EAC gas pump setback.
Yes. It was the gas pump setback, and then there were, what was that?
Paving?
The what?
Was Delval paving there?
Oh, yes. You guys made recommendations. No, no, you didn't make recommendations, because they weren't finished yet. About Delaware Valley paving, and there was a lot line change that was supposed to come, that is supposed to come before the board between McAvoy Brick and.
Valley Forge Railways.
Yes, Valley Forge Railways, for a lot line change, but they haven't come to us yet. So we will see that, and it was pretty much a new-brainer as far as the planning commission was concerned. So I apologize, Kurt. It was so long ago. Oh, gosh, and. I think that's it.
Okay, thanks.
He reported on EAC.
So I didn't attend committee commission meetings. I'm still recuperating. I'll probably start back in September. Lori?
We're happy to see you.
Thanks, yeah. Lori or Valentina can give their report.
I will keep it very brief, just one, I'll say small, but it, it's a big thing, but the White Horse Road Penn dot project, the bridge is, that is completed, so the road is open, thank God, before school started.
Fantastic.
So shout out to the chief on that one. He really helped to keep that project moving, that. So shout out to the chief on that one, he really helped to keep that project moving that got off to a very rocky start, so. But, but we're open and, and the school buses don't have to worry.
Alright, thanks. And, um, we'll go to Brian for the Police Department.
Brian McCarthy again for the Police Department. I submitted the monthly police activity report to everyone, I don't know if you got a chance to look at it. Uh, if you had any questions about anything you see there, be happy to answer those. Um, first, uh, on behalf of the association, I'd like to thank the board, um, for letting us be cops here for another couple of years. This one took a lot, uh, you know, I think everybody knows that there was a lot of dialogue that went into this, but there was also a lot of thought, a lot of heart, a lot of good conversations, um, it's tough to get, you know, if you ever try to get six people in a room and figure out where you're going to dinner, that's impossible. And when everybody's trying to sit down and agree on one or two things, it's even harder. Uh, but I really appreciate the diligence shown, um, by, you know, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Cooney, Lori. All of us really appreciate, uh, where we ended up with things, uh, everybody's really happy, so thank you again for your efforts and all of that. Um, just to give you a heads up on a, an incident we had this, uh, last week, Officer Shalas took a report of a missing endangered subject from the Liberty House. A gentleman was supposed to drop a friend off in Westchester and just continued to drive. Um, he is dependent upon daily medication, which he was not receiving. Thanks to a grant from the, or I'm sorry, he entered this subject into the National Criminal Information Center, uh, which is a national database that if this person were to have contact with any police officer anywhere in the country and they ran his information, a flag would come up on their computer saying, hey, Skookle Township is looking for this guy, contact Officer Shalas at this number. Thanks to a grant through the Department of Emergency Services and the Chiefs of Police Association of Chester County, we've been given access to a database that links all of the license plate readers in the greater Philadelphia area, almost in real time, so much so that we can turn it on and sit in the Wawa parking lot, and it'll tell us every expired tag that goes through the intersection of one thirteen and twenty-three. We're, we're not chasing all those people down to Lori, but it's still, when you have something like this, we were able to put this gentleman's license plate into the system, and within ten seconds it told us that he had been seen in Marcus Hook four times the day before. We called down to Marcus Hook, they kept an eye out for him, nobody could find him. Officer Acquanti jumped on and he got in touch with the detective from the Newcastle County Police Department Stolen Vehicle Unit. He has access to a system that's nationwide. He ran the tag and he said, your guy's in South Carolina. He popped up on a license plate reader two days ago. Fortunately, uh, our subject had contact with the Charlestown County Sheriff's Office in South Carolina. Um, somebody called a well-being check on him, he seemed disoriented, he's out in front of a gas station. They ran his information, the flag popped up, Skookle Township's looking for your guy. They called us right away, had a conversation with the deputy, I happened to be on duty that day, and I said, hey, you know, guys, they've been in need of medication for about three days now, they said, listen, we've, we've already got him at the hospital, he's being evaluated. We contacted the family, they were able to secure the individual in a hospital for at least seventy-two hours. Gave the family a chance to go down there and reunite with their loved ones. So he is home, he's safe, he is recovering.
Oh, that's good news.
Yeah, we were all pretty happy with that one. We put it on Facebook, it was seen by more than a hundred and seventy-five thousand people. So that continues to be a tremendous asset to just getting information out very quickly. Um, with schools starting again, we did talk about the White Horse Road Bridge opening up. Uh, we are going to start targeted enforcement details of the school zones. More often than not, sometimes it's parents trying to rush to get their kids into schools, um, but with the way that our shift rotations work right now, on days that we have three officers out, I, I will usually take a zone instead of staying logged on as an all-car supervisor, and we will designate a traffic unit to just, their only responsibility is to go out and target these areas. We tried it out with the White Horse Road detours. Those guys were out on Cherry Lane, on the Pickering Penny Packer, just making sure we were stopping motorists for stop sign violations and things like that. So we will be doing the school zones, um, according to the, uh, the data captured by the Signal Sidearm Company that comes off the side of the school buses, uh, these bus stop in front of Magic Memories is the number one violation place for the entire school district. Um, the reason for that, there's four bus stops there. So at some point or another, people are, if they're just not paying attention, we usually do post an officer there. So just something for any township residents that happen to be listening into this meeting, please slow down. Um, fifteen miles an hour is the limit while the lights are flashing. Failing to do so could result in a four hundred and sixty-one dollar and seventy-five cent citation, a sixty-day license suspension, and five points on your license.
Brian, would you-
Yes, ma'am.
Would you have our Facebook donut guy put that information on Facebook?
Yes, yeah, we usually-
That would be really good, like you said, a hundred and some odd thousand people see that.
Yes.
Um, I think it would be better than having them listen to this meeting.
Yes, we do, every, every, yeah, every year we do, usually PennDOT will put something out as well, sometimes we share theirs. One of our big posts that we do try to put out this time of year is exactly that. Make sure you're paying attention, put the phone down, make sure you're looking for the school bus sign. If you see the le, the yellow lights, you're still legally required to stop for the yellow lights. It's not like the yellow light at the intersection where everybody tries to speed up and get past it. Yeah, again, we really just want everybody to be safe for the most part, we don't have too many issues. But, you know, the signal, the, uh, the sidearm cameras have been working really well for us, but we also try and make sure that we're present, especially in the neighborhoods where the kids are constantly running back and forth across the street. With Magic Memories, it's not that big of an issue, the kids aren't crossing the street to get on the bus there, but at any of the neighborhoods, you know, kids come from all over the place. So you will see an increased, uh, increased presence of officers in the neighborhoods, especially for the first two weeks of school. So.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, could we incorporate Martha into any photo shoot for school bus safety? That gets posted as a-
Sure.
I'm kind of joking, but I'm not really joking. She doesn't want to-
Second that.
Yeah.
Um, no, I, I do have a serious question.
Yes.
So one of the members of the school board reached out to me, um, we're friendly, and said that at some of the school board meetings, residents have been complaining about the location of the no-turn-on-red sign on the corner of, I think it's the Phantom Way and Pot House Road. Um, I think it's where Trotters Lane is on the one side, Phantom Way is on the other. And I think that the concern expressed has been that it's too close to the intersection, and, and I, my guess is this, or these are parents that are concerned that people are not stopping, um, because of crossings, crossing kids.
Right.
I, I, is that something that has been brought up to the Police Department and? Because the question that was originally asked to me is, is, is that our road or is that the PennDOT road? And I said it's our road. It's Penn, is it a PennDOT road? Okay, so-
Tish has thrown her stop sign at cars.
So-
Because they will turn and she's got kids.
Right.
And she has thrown her stop sign at cars.
So, so I, I guess I, I guess if it's a PennDOT road, we don't really have any control over the placement of signs, but is it something that we could do more patrolling?
So, I'm glad you brought that up, and I'm glad you brought up Tish as well. Tish is the crossing guard that helps the kids get across the driveway from Trotters into the Phantom Way. I had a conversation, I sit out there often, especially in the, the school bus lot because of the, the way that the car line drops off. Sometimes people get a little road ragey in there, dropping their kids off in the morning. She had asked for the same thing, so I actually reached out to Nick, our roadmaster, to say, hey, the sign is actually mounted on a pole next to the right turn lane, so as cars come into that right turn lane and they're looking left on the Trotters to make sure nobody's coming, they blow right past that no-turn-on-red sign and they just dump a right into the parking lot. I had asked if we could get another sign printed, made from whoever, and put on the actual traffic arm itself. When I talked to Nick, his response is that we, I, I guess you need a permit to put signs up there, and we didn't even have a permit for the original no-turn-on-red sign. So there was some discussion that it might have just kind of wound up there to keep everybody safe, but it doesn't sound like there was anything officially requested or offered as far as putting signs up there. I believe we control the traffic signals in the township, so I don't know if you need to reach out to PennDOT to get a permit to put another sign on the cross arm itself.
So we, we can, I, I can chime in on that, so we, the township's responsible for maintaining the traffic signals, but we have to maintain them in accordance with PennDOT's permit, so we already have existing permits on the traffic signals from PennDOT. Um, I believe what, yeah, exactly what Nick explained is, you know, every so often, overtime signs creep up on traffic lights that are not um, permitted by PennDOT and aren't supposed to be there, and we just recently had our full, um, preventative maintenance review done. So some signs that were not in accordance with our permit would have been removed, maybe that one wasn't caught. Um, we could discuss with our traffic engineer, getting it added, but it's not always an easy process with PennDOT to get things changed on our permits, but we, we can inquire and see if it's something that we can do. Um-
That's not something you, that's within your discretion as township manager, right, and the roadmaster, that's not something that we need to vote on, or do we?
No, correct. We, we can, we can investigate it, sometimes though, depending on the nature, a no-turn-on-red sign might be simple enough, but you would think it might be simple enough, it, it probably won't be. If it were to require a traffic study, then I would have to come back to you for that.
Right.
Brian, do you also think that that might be another good thing that Facebook donut guy could put out there for us?
Sure, uh, we can put, we can put anything on there, whether or not, we put on there all the time. Please don't speed on the side streets, please don't speed in neighborhoods, we still catch people doing it, we can certainly throw it out there. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, thanks. Uh, Township Engineer, Paul?
Yes, thank you. Um, we're going to start working on the, uh, annual report for our MS four permit, uh, that's due at the end of September, there's no great changes to anything. Um, additionally, uh, I was talking to Nick about the PRP plan with the swales and the check dams, he's, uh, he and I are going to have a, a, a meeting on next week, we'll probably see if Valentina and Lori are available for it as well. But he did give, uh, there were three aspects of it, and one of them was to use some inlet dirt bags in certain areas, and Nick has gone through. And we had suggested, instead of doing all of them at once, just do a handful to see, uh, the amount of sediment load that you were getting. And he said so far he's cleaned them out, he thinks that they're doing pretty well. He only put in, I believe, three out of the ten that were uh, on the proposed plan, and it looks like he's already getting, uh, a good portion of the sediment load. So there could be a potential savings to the township that they don't have to install as many inlet bags and then maintain them going forward. Uh, additionally, as a side note, uh, one of the other townships we represent, Wilson Borough, uh, their, their, um, PRP plan and that permit just got approved and extended, et cetera. And the good news is, is that, uh, there was no additional PRP plans to be, uh, required at that point, so there had been a lot of talk that that was the hope and things like that, and, uh, now it's starting to matriculate out to everybody, so it looks like we're not going to have to deal with that small area and try and figure out how to, how to manage sediment.
Well, you were just saying that you only needed three bags?
A, as of now, I believe there were only three bags, yes.
Maybe in the future, if they say you have to improve upon it, then you could just increase them.
Exactly. Uh, that's it for, for me, unless anyone has any questions.
No, thanks. Alright, um, additional business, um, I'll make that motion to authorize town, uh, authorize advertisement of the August twenty second, twenty twenty four workshop meeting and September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty four workshop meeting. As regular voting meetings where the board may consider any business that comes before it, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a discussion on agenda items for upcoming workshop meetings? Do we have any?
The only thing, the only thing that, um, I had was that guy from the Chester County Planning Commission regarding the two hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. Um, but I don't, that's up to Lori and Valentina as to when they can get him to come.
I have that on my list. We have some other ordinance updates that we've tabled, uh, we tabled the plastic bag ordinance, so, um, we can, I think we have a pretty decent-sized running list of future workshop items here, and we might have some additional things to be added to the next few. So unless anybody has anything specific in addition to the ones we've discussed already, I think we're, I think we're, we're good.
Alright, thanks. I don't see any, anybody else, so, cool. I don't have any announcements in front of me, no announcements, and, um, public comment, if the fire department has anything and wants to share with us, that'd be fantastic, and-
Seventy-fifth?
Yeah, I saw, I did see that, thank you, thank you.
Uh, next Saturday, the twenty-fourth is our seventy-fifth, uh, hopefully I'd like to see you guys out there. Um, we'll have some other elected officials present, plenty of food, plenty of drink, plenty of, uh, probably bad lies and good times. Uh, we'd love to see you. Starts at one PM, uh, if you have any questions on what we're doing, how we're doing, if you'd also feel free to contact us, so, we appreciate it. Questions, comments?
How late you going?
I'm sorry?
How late are you going?
Five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Mark, Mark's ready to party hard.
I'm not allowed in the heat. I have to go, I have to wait till the sun goes down.
Fair enough.
So it's Saturday, one to five?
Correct, next Saturday, twenty-fourth.
Five AM, right.
Uh, if you do hear an odd sound, uh, Officer McCarthy, I'm looking your way. Uh, we plan on exercising the house siren at some point during that.
Oh, cool, I thought you guys disconnected that.
Hopefully we can see it, thank you.
Alright, cool, thanks. Any other, anybody else with public comment? I'll make a motion, we adjourn, hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody.